You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
I would give you being a little past six, a call to order. The February thirteenth meeting of the planning board here at Whitcomb Hall. Uh, we can make the gold call. Here, Richard Blaine.
Here.
Marcus Valera.
Here.
Brandon himself. Here. Michael York.
Here.
Victoria Ains.
Here.
And so selectmen's rep Charles Harbeck is not here. The Malone alternate not here. Gene Johnson alternate is here. Michael Sanjail alternate is not here. And since we don't see an alternate for the select rec, the select rec probably will not be seated. So the agenda for tonight is we have the approval of the January twenty-third, twenty twenty-five minutes. And under public hearings, we have planning board twenty-five dash zero zero one. It's a site plan review, public hearing. Fieldstone Land Consultants has submitted on behalf of Pilgrim Pines Camp. An application for the construction of a bath house and associated site improvements at two twenty West Shore Road. Subject property is shown at tax map two four two lot ten and twelve and located in the rural agricultural district. Item B, public hearing, planning board twenty-five dash zero zero two. That's a site plan review. Black Belt LLC has submitted an application for the construction of a drive-through restaurant facility at the southern corner of Marcy Hill Road and Route twelve. Subject property is shown at tax map two twenty lot five and located in the business district. Under discussions and other business, we have Chad Brandon from Fieldstone Land Consultants. A site plan extension for one fifteen Old Homestead Highway. And item B, Chad Branton, I mean Brandon, sorry. Fieldstone Land Consultants, site plan extension for map two oh nine lot four, actual construction moving and stuff on. Separate driveway. And that's item C, any other business as maybe was required. Terms could top the list, and that would be the approval of the minutes. So yeah, approval of minutes for January twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. So depending on his motion, okay, Mark. How did you approve the minutes of twenty twenty-five, twenty-third? Second by Astoria.
I have one correction.
One correction.
My name was submitted from the apps on the present.
Okay, we will add that in. Anybody else? And all those in favor of the minutes with that one amendment, say aye. All those opposed? And second item would be a regional impact. But if you feel that anything on the agenda tonight has a regional impact.
Um, there's no regional impact.
Motion by Michael York, no regional impact. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, you put the saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? For our first, first caller's hearing, twenty-four, twenty-five, zero, zero, one. And that's a site plan review. Fieldstone Land Consultants submitted on behalf of Pilgrim Pines Camp. Application for the construction of a bath house, associated site improvements. And we're going to see if the application is complete. So if you would go through the application on the checklist.
Sure. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Chad Brandon, civil engineer with Fieldstone Land Consultants. Uh, representing Pilgrim Pines this evening with their, um, site plan application to add a new bath house to their, um, facility at two twenty, uh, West Shore Road. And so just taking a look at our application, um, you would see that we submitted a copy of the checklist. It's a page four of the submission. So if we just walk down through their, uh, name and address of owner, you'll see that that's on the title block. The tax map and lot number is also in the title block and shown on the plan. Uh, we have a north arrow as well as the graphic scale and scale bar are shown, um, on the plan as well. Vicinity sketch in the top right-hand corner of the plans. Uh, we have the names and addresses of all, uh, budding, uh, landowners, um, depicted within the plan set. We submitted the abouters list as well. Um, physical features and uses of land within two hundred feet of the site. We actually submitted a waiver for that with this application. Uh, the bath house that's being proposed is what is pretty centrally located. It's an eighty-five plus acre property. So we think we're showing adequate detail around the proposed improvement. And so we've requested a waiver from that. So I think technically the checklist is complete with that, but I'm happy to answer any questions or if the board wants me to go into the waiver request at this time. Just finish the rest of our checklist. Okay. Um, perimeter boundary lines and lot area and square feet in acres. We, uh, do have that on the, uh, plans. We have the perimeter of the lot here on the, uh, site location reference. And we have the, uh, area in square footage and acres on, uh, the site plan itself. The shape, size, height, and location and use of existing structures on the site and those that are proposed. Uh, we have those details within, you know, the project vicinity. The, uh, waiver would kind of cover everything that's outside of that. So satisfied that checklist. Location, name, and width of existing and proposed roads. Uh, we do show, uh, West Shore Road here on the, um, south side of the proposed bath house area. And width is detailed on there as well. Uh, we, um, show all the access, uh, details for the site. Uh, we're not proposing any new access points, so there's technically not a, um, of site distance evaluation. It's an internal private, uh, road. We have, you know, just some parking on, on the private roadway itself. So I think we satisfied that with the details on the plan. Location, number of parking spaces and loading spaces, those are shown on the plan as well. Um, landscaping plan, we do have, you know, some details relative to landscaping shown. With this project, it's really just loaming and seating. We're proposing a bath house and open, you know, lawn field there. So, uh, pretty, pretty minor details. Location and type of all existing and proposed lighting. Um, we're not doing any additional lighting, um, for the site. It's just going to be a typical, uh, light next to the door. Um, so it's not a parking lot. We're not looking to illuminate. And this is a seasonal structure too, so it's, um, pretty, pretty modest from a lighting standpoint. Natural features such as water bodies, ledge out, cropping in wetlands. Uh, we have detailed all of that within the project vicinity. Existing and proposed grades and topographic contours at five foot intervals. We do have that on the plan. The size and accurate location of all existing and proposed water mains, culverts, fire hydrants, and fire pumps. Those are detailed on the plan as a applicable. Means of providing water supply is detailed on the plans as well. Um, surface drainage patterns are detailed on the grading plan or with the grading details. Uh, copy of certification by a licensed septic designer that the system is sufficient for existing and proposed use. Um, this is really not applicable. We could provide it if it was needed, but we're essentially removing a bath house and adding a bath house. So we're not increasing the loading or anything to the, um, septic system. The old bath house would be converted to storage space. So there's no, um, you know, septic loading departments, and then we'd have the new bath house which we replace it. So, um, there's no requirement for, uh, state approval. And that's such the requirement for certification, but we would be happy to provide that for a belt. Location and type of proposed sewer disposal system. We do, um, detail the, um, components in proximity to the proposed improvements. Location of existing and proposed onsite, uh, well, um, that kind of would touch base with our waiver request because it's quite a distance from, you know, the proposed improvement. There's a water line that goes up the, um, the camp access road. And we're essentially just tying, you know, right into that water line. And that is detailed. Soil survey data from Cheshire County Soil Survey. We do have that, um, on the plans. Location of any existing and proposed easements, deep restrictions. We haven't addressed that in, um, no formal plans. Architectural plans, we provided a footprint for the, uh, proposed, uh, bath house as part of the, the application. And the architecture is really going to follow the existing, you know, building styles, uh, within the, you know, the, the development itself. We don't have a completed architectural, uh, full design at this time. We hope to address that as part of the building, um, permanent process. So that goes, that's the checklist. Okay, summary, Mr. Chairman, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Have any questions on the completeness of the application? Anybody? Then we can address the waiver, and that's the one about the physical features and land within two hundred feet of the site. And if the board finds that granting the waivers would not have any adverse impact on public health, safety, or funding properties, and that goes along with the purpose of the evidence, waiver should be granted.
I'll sub move.
Just, do I understand this? Uh, physical features? It's, it's just the, the topography and the buildings that are within two hundred feet of the proposed bath house. That's what that means?
That's right, yeah.
Okay. And it's all shown?
It is shown here. We have a good site plan. We've had a good site plan in that area for a long time. Motion by Michael York to grant the waiver.
I'll second.
Seconded by Brandon. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I just have one question. This area, I mean, the area that kind of got washed out during the big rain.
This area did not get washed out. Um, there was some washout from, uh, planned areas that kind of migrated into the field area that was cleaned up. But there was no, I don't believe there was any issues with this area. Yeah.
All those in favor of granting the waiver indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. We can move on to public hearing. I will open up the public hearing and make your sensation.
Sure.
Do you need a motion to check with the three floor?
Oh, that's right. Thank you. Yes, yeah. We have, oh, I got a motion. Motion to accept the application as complete.
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Brandon. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye. All those opposed? Okay, now you can get it.
All right. Thank you very much. So, um, this site consists of just over eighty-five acres of land. It's primarily situated on the north and northwest side of, um, Swansea Lake along, uh, West Shore Road. There is a, um, so you have the, the beach area here for, uh, the Pilgrim Pine site. And then you have, um, as you work your way away from the beaches, West Shore Road. And then there's the kind of the camp access road that heads to the north, close to the camp ground back. As you turn onto the camp access road, the existing bath house is the second structure. There's some parking, um, located on the west side of the camp access road. And simply what we're proposing as part of this project is to construct a new bath house on the east side of that, um, camp access road in this location here. Um, the new bath structure would be, you know, an upgrade over, you know, the existing, um, structure onsite. It would be ADA accessible, uh, be slightly bigger. It's about two thousand and ninety square feet. Um, and we have more conforming, you know, a layout and internal, um, um, components, bath stalls such. Uh, we are proposing, uh, three parking spaces on the east side of that access road to, to support the structure. And then it's pretty modest, um, site improvements, meaning we're doing some modest grading around the, um, proposed structure. Essentially, all the drainage and grading would cast along the vegetated, uh, field area and, and ultimately run to, there's a, there's a pond that's located, I know, in an open field area just to the east of this, of this proposed improvement. And the drain would primarily go in that direction and then work its way towards, uh, the label. So as part of the plan set, we have a site plan, a partial existing conditions plan. Uh, we have a grading and drainage plan, and then we have utility plans. Um, there is, uh, uh, onsite septic and water for this facility. Um, as I stated before, I was turning the utility plan. The the water line actually comes up the west side of the, uh, access road, camp access road. And so we're, you know, we just have a short, uh, domestic connection to the water line to service the structure. This would be a seasonal, uh, bath house, so, um, it would not be insulated, you know, open, you know, during winter months. Uh, and then the sewer line and the sewer, the septic system comes along the, uh, east side of that, uh, camp access road. There's the existing tanks are right out in front of where we're proposing to, uh, construct the bath house. And so we'd be tying right into that, um, that kind of trunk line for the septic system. And then that would ultimately come down to the pump chamber and then get pumped in the septic field is actually kind of in the northeast corner.
That's still up the hills?
It is.
Okay. I was wondering, I was going to ask you where that was.
Yeah. And so nothing's changing with any of those components. Again, it's, it's, it's quite simple. It's, you know, build a, a new bath house, convert the old one across the road into, um, storage and just try to provide some upgrades for normal people that utilize the thing. Um, with this, uh, project, we are located over two hundred and fifty feet from the lake, so there's no shoreline permitting requirement. There's actually no state permitting requirements here because we're not adding any additional, uh, septic loading to the field. Just kind of replacing the structure. It's essentially all we're doing. So, um, the only approval that's required is an approval from, on the planning board for a site plan modification. Uh, we had met with town staff to review this to see what the requirements were. They, they thought it would be appropriate to come before the board, you know, have a hearing and, and discuss this and make sure we get an updated site plan approved. So that's why we're here this evening. Um, I will say, you know, it's not really in the application, but because of the nature of this project and the nature of the use here, um, this bath house is not going to get constructed right off. There's going to be funding, you know, fundraising, um, campaign for, you know, uh, generating the funds for this facility. And so because of that, I want the board, I'm going to ask the board to consider, uh, extending the approval for a longer timeframe. It wouldn't make any sense for us to operate on a one-year approval for this. Uh, we may not, you know, my client may not have funds raised in a, in a calendar year for this building. Initial estimates are pretty high considering the construction cost, so they think it's going to take a little bit of time. So I would like to ask the board to consider a five-year approval for this, um, primarily because it, it doesn't require any other approvals. And again, because of the fundraising effort and that our clients, you know, um, invested a fair amount of money just in our, um, you know, fees to, to get it to this point and to, you know, get, get the appropriate approvals. And we'd like to, you know, give them some time to, you know, to, to raise some money. So I'd appreciate it if the board would consider that as part of, of this application. I do believe that the, the state laws allow applicants to request a longer timeframe. Um, and the board gets to review that on a case-by-case basis. So we appreciate that evaluation.
All right. Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Ask a nosy question?
Sure.
Um, the bat, who uses this bath house? Is it for the swimmers that's a lay or for campers?
I think everybody can use it. It's really, I mean, it's, it's, it's certainly not, and, and Mr. Condap, who's, you know, from Pilgrim Pines, uh, can maybe speak to this. But my, to my, it's my understanding that it's open for anybody that's utilizing the, you know, the facilities. And so it would be, it certainly would be an improvement, a benefit, um, that they look forward to making some, you know, some improvements to their facilities.
Any questions from the public? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed. So pretty straightforward, we can see, doing up there. The only thing is about the five-year approval there. Now, personally, I don't have an objection to it. Our site plan regulations bind us to a one-year approval with a one-year extension. But we can waive any portion of our site plan review regulations on a case-by-case basis. And the other thing being a bath house up there, it's not like they haven't been there. They've been in business there for a long time, and they, I would imagine, they've been in business there for an awful long time afterwards. I don't see any real reason not to grant them the five-year extension on that if we approve it. Anybody else?
We're compromised on that. Probably three, that's three. I will come in and see where we are with it.
I suppose we could, but again, it's in the middle of a large piece. I mean, you know, it's their, their facility up there. They are most likely going to replace the bath houses. And if they don't, they've got the other ones that are going to be there, the original ones that are there now that they're going to keep on using. Worse, to worse, they did just never end up filling. I think that's not a big deal either. I don't see what we need to give them a three-year and then the five-year. I think the five-year, if they need five years to raise the funds for it, I don't see why we couldn't grant that. Two more years isn't any difference to me.
I agree with Scott. I think given that it's fundraising could be a challenge and it could take time. And it's internal to the development that's there, you know, that we're on the main street or something, the main street of West Shore Drive. That might be different, but I would have five years.
Let's, yes, let's have a motion to that effect to waive that portion of our site plan rights that says the approval is for one year, and we will have it for five years.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by.
So one question. Is that five years to substantial progress or is it to completion?
To completion. I think we ought to have it as completion as long. So.
Yes. Okay, so what happens if they're under construction? They haven't been completed in the five years once you do that.
And they come back in to see it, but again, it's not like they're building the time.
Well, yeah, no, I understand that.
But then they just be back in, the building inspector will be out there checking it out. No. So. I guess with the motion on the floor, Victoria made the motion.
I seconded it.
With the additional language.
Additional language, which was.
That, that, that construction would be.
Be by.
By that to the.
All those in favor of the amendment, I suppose, to this, their motion as before coming after this? Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, now we need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Michael York. It was a five-year period. Michael, five-year period, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Second by Mark. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
We'll get last hour.
Let's go into, let's go under discussions and other business. Well, Mr. Brandon is here, because that's another item he has. It's the item A, which is Fieldstone Land Consultants site and extension for one fifteen Old Homestead Highway.
Sorry for the excuse myself. And my reason.
Because I'm unnamed person in litigation with Fieldstone in that room.
Is half the board named on this? So you're named.
Sure, you just.
I know, but you're not seated anyways. You're not named.
No.
Not named. So you weren't here.
It works, right?
Okay, or your name?
No, I'm not. Part of the. Well, the planning system will be. Yeah, well, it's just. But on specific.
It was those that voted one way and didn't vote the other way. The ones that voted one way got named in a lawsuit. The others that voted obviously did not get named. So that's how that, that's why part of our board was named, or it wasn't. Okay. Don't let me forget about them. Okay, yeah, so this is a site plan extension for one fifteen Old Homestead Highway. And this is the, um, plan view, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Plan view.
Yeah, so we're, we put a request in for the one-year extension, which is outlined within the, uh, original approval letter. So at the, the bottom of the approval letter dated May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, it says a one-time twelve-month extension may be requested no less than thirty days prior to the expiration of approval, um, of April tenth, two thousand approval, uh, for good cause, sorry. And, uh, we have requested that extension. Um, unfortunately, due to, you know, the timeframe and such, the, um, funding cycle for, uh, this type of project, which you may recall is a new project. Um, the project did not get awarded funding, um, due to, you know, some of the timeframe issues. And so, uh, we will have to, uh, my client will have to resubmit, um, for this, this coming, um, year's cycle. And so, um, that's, you know, that's the reason why we are seeking the extension. And, you know, he's hoping, he's hoping to start with the next calendar year.
So did the transfer go through? Did you guys or did your client purchase the property already or is that still on?
He has purchased.
Okay, so you're, you're ready to go once you get the funding.
Yeah, the property has been purchased by my client. Um, all the, you know, state permits and everything, everything's still valid. Uh, but the, you know, quite honestly, a one-year site plan approval is, is quite, one year goes by, you know, pretty fast. Um, and I'll say that for every extension, especially in New England, you know, winter conditions and stuff. Um, so, uh, that's, you know, that's the reason for the additional year.
Okay. Any?
Yeah, I got, I got a question. Where, where is it set? Do we have a copy out of my, out, the restricted D to sixty-two?
Um, I don't know if that was, if that's been submitted or not.
Yeah, it's a condition anyway.
It's a condition.
And it's administrative. So they can't get the CO until that's in, but they'd be wise to get that in.
The other question I have for the chairman is we only can, three people can vote on it. Is that a four?
Three people, you got one, two, three, four, five. They weren't here.
They weren't here.
You don't think they can vote on it because they weren't in on the.
Okay.
I don't, I don't see that as a problem.
My mistake. I thought there was only three of us.
No, I think it was.
Okay.
When did the funding expire?
We, so the project, the project secured funding at, on previous years, but we didn't have local approval. And then we got local approval and we're not, and we were not able to secure funding with, you have to have all the approvals in, in order to, you know, to dial in the, you know, the funding. And, and so it didn't, it didn't secure, the project didn't secure, uh, approval of this calendar year. And the state ultimately decides.
Twenty twenty-five.
Correct. And so the state ultimately decides, you know, what projects they're going to fund. There's a, there's a, uh, ultimately a, a scoring cycle and how they do that. And sometimes they, you know, some years they fund more than others. And so unfortunately, this one just didn't make it. It'll be on the list again, you know, for next year. So I'm quite confident that it will be funded, but it's happens with these types of projects.
If they get funding in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
I was told that they did secure funding or they felt they would secure it if we were able to secure the local approvals, but that didn't happen. Right, so it never made it to having it, you know, vested guaranteed because you have to have a local. But they've been trying, you know, for that for multiple years. Yes.
So it's an annual funding cycle?
Sometimes semi-annual, depending on if the state will issue more funds. But, um, to be completely transparent and honest, I'm not an expert when it comes to, you know, the funding part of it. Um, so I'm sharing the knowledge that I know and have been shared with me. I don't know, you know, when the next session will be, but, um, I'm told that hopefully later this year, there'll be another site.
Yeah, no, the reason I'm asking is I'm just curious because, you know, I mean, this was originally through by this board in, uh, February of twenty twenty-three, I believe. Um, and then it came in, was it June or July of twenty-three, and asked for a parking, uh, space reduction.
That doesn't have much to do with what we're.
It's actually not the way it worked. And so I presented this project, so.
And I'll share each.
Yeah, so we didn't get approval until the night that we, the board actually considered the parking reduction waiver. So the same night the board approved the project is the same night they contemplated the waiver. And so when we left that, that approval meeting, we had to revise the whole plan, which means we had to go after all the state permits again. So we had to go back for the alteration of terrain permit. And so there was a considerable, even though we secured the appro, I just want to be very clear. Even though we secured the approval that night, that approval came with the granting of a waiver that changed the project.
Okay. And that, that was in June of twenty-three. And then the plot was assigned until eleven, almost eleven and a half months later. I'm wondering what happened in that period of twenty-three and twenty-four when you had funding and you had the opportunity to, you know, redo the project, get all the permits and everything else. I mean, I.
But we had to, we don't have, we didn't have the alteration of terrain permit then. And so you missed, you missed the window. You have to have a fully permitted project. And that's where the one year honestly is real critical. Because the alteration of terrain permit, the day we submit that permit, it's probably a ninety-day, you know, permit if everything goes perfect. And then there can be, you know, with this project, there was, you know, FAA review because we changed the building design. So we had to go through that all over again. There was a sewer discharge permit, you know, at the state. There was a considerable amount of permits. There was actually a shoreline permit because of its location with, you know, Wilson Pond. And so all of those had to be modified and secured after this board, you know, granted that parking waiver. And then we had to come back to this board for compliance hearings to, to show that this is what it would look like with the parking reduction and secure that. So when you think, you have to have applications in for funding well in advance of the date that they pull the trigger in. The date that they pull and trigger and award the money. And so it just, you know, just hasn't worked out. Trust me, my client. Would love to have been awarded, you know, the, you know, that. So it's, it's not.
And I'm just asking, it's just one point, I think it's correction is. The parking lot reduction waiver didn't change the structure. That structure was approved initially.
Right, but you don't go after FAA until we have an approval. And so that was the day that, you know, we, we got the approval.
I'm, I'm just wondering, because a lot of time has passed, you know.
Oh, without a doubt.
Here you are asking for an extension, so.
But they're within their appropriate time to ask for it.
They are.
They are. So it's, I don't see any reason not to grant the extension unless someone else does. If that's the case, then a motion to grant the one-year extension would be in order.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Michael York to grant the one-year extension, they're second? I'll second it. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, then your extension.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Don't go away. Okay. I have number B. It's Fieldstone Land Consultants Site Plan Extension for map two oh nine lot four, Asher Construction. That's up Sapper Drive. That was that for that twenty-seven thousand square foot contractor basis.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Again, for the record, Chad Brandon with Fieldstone Land Consultants, representing Asher Construction. To be honest, I'm not sure of extension is necessary for this project, but in the interest of being conservative. We requested it. And I say that because the town of. Swansea has always acted on if construction has started and commenced, then you meet that one-year requirement. I know there's been some talk about the town changing that process. But Mr. Olson and Asher Construction has done significant work on the site. They, they've actually done all the drainage. They. Prep the site. A lot of the grading is done, utilities have been brought in. But because of the, you know, the seasonal nature of New England and, and, you know, with costs, winter cost increases. You know, he thought it would be better to wait until spring to do the concrete work. And, you know, this is again, a one-year window is, is, is tight. And so that's why we're before you. But I think that technically he has, you know, started, you know, substantial construction. I don't know if that matters, but I thought I would just share that in case that, that does. But otherwise, we would be requesting one-year extension.
It would have mattered had you not requested the extension, but it doesn't matter in this case because you're requesting an extension. So. Anybody have any questions on that? Then motions to grant the extension would be in order. So. Motion by Richard to grant the extension, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Brandon, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you very much.
Okay. A moment, we'll be going to the second public hearing in the ninth.
Hey, Jack.
Yeah, thank you.
Have a good night.
Really, I wanted to want to say.
Yes, one set there and there's two sets.
We've got one set there.
Yeah, just, just one right here.
Yeah, I think you only have. She just three.
We have just one here.
Oh, you already have, okay. You've got that start on. If you guys want to say anything, just take your time. Okay, we're going for item number B. That is going to be a public hearing on planning board twenty-five dash here's your two at the site line review. Black Belt LLC has submitted an application for the construction of a drive-through restaurant facility at the southern corner of Marcy Hill Road and Route twelve. The property is shown at tax map two twenty, lot five, and located in the business district. So we're seeing if the application is complete. Would you mind going through the checklist for us?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Adams. My name is Mark Bowdrey with Civil. I'm a perpetual engineer here in that, in Hampshire, and I was the one who stamped the drawings. And so regarding the application. I can go through it and point out specifically various things that we like on the drawings, but.
You have the checklist?
I do checklist.
Just go.
On my phone.
Okay.
So name and address of owner. Which that's clearly on the cover page.
Yep.
The tax map lot number same. North arrow graphic scale, that's, I think you call it the thirty scale. We actually have a point scale on the site. The, with north arrows, et cetera. Name and address of flat preparer, that would be civil works. And McInnany Survey Associates is our survey area. And we're actually in the same building. The vicinity sketch is. On the cover sheet, names and addresses of the abutters are on the existing conditions plan. Physical features and land use within two hundred feet, that is on the drawings. It shows all the wetlands. Topography at, you know, at two-foot contours, et cetera. So that's all on not only the. Existing conditions plan, but also on the site plans. Shape, size, height, location of existing structures. There are none. It's vacant property. Location, name, widths of existing and proposed roads. It, it's at the intersection of Marcy Hill Road and Route twelve that are both shown clearly on the plan. There are no proposed roads other than driveway, accessing egress driveways. The, speaking of which, identification of access from the site to public streets, site distance from access points, curb cuts, proposed changes offending to existing streets. When we submitted, we were actually on, entering onto Marcy Hill Road. As a result of a meeting that we had at the planning board for informational purposes back in November. And so that was shown, but we do want to talk about some changes that have evolved since we submitted. In, in response primarily to DPW Director Joe DeRusso's comments. Location and number of parking and loading spaces, that is on the plan. Landscape plan, a stamped landscape plan was in our plan set. Lighting also is in the, in, you know, full photometric plan is in the, the drawing set. Natural features, water bodies, like gel cropping wetlands, already spoke to that. Topographic contours at five-foot intervals. We actually have two-foot contour intervals. Size, location of water mains, culverts, fire hydrants, fire ponds. We have a. We're actually on a private water supply well in septic. So those are all indicated on, on the drawings. No, no fire hydrants proposed. We do have culverts shown where appropriate on the plan. Water supply is, I just mentioned, is a private well. Surface drainage patterns. We do have, we had a drainage report in our plan set. In our plan set, all, I'm, I'm sorry, in our submission, a separate drainage report that had existing and proposed. Watershed maps. We also have a stormwater management basins and catch basins, et cetera, all shown in detail on the site plan set. Copy of certification by a licensed septic designer that the existing system is sufficient for existing proposed use. We don't have an existing system. It's new construction. Location type of proposed sewage disposal system, that is shown, the onsite system is shown. Location of the well showing seventy-five foot protective radius, we actually show a hundred foot radius. And. Soil survey from Cheshire County is actually on the note page of our plans. We have a, you know, talking about the various soil types. And I think the, the existing conditions plan are, also has some information on that. Location of any existing or proposed easements, deed restrictions, or covenants. There are none affecting the actual. Location of this property, this development. But on the, there is an access easement on the, if, if, if you, if you look at the existing. Conditions plan.
It's outside.
The driveway that goes to the towing company is. Was actually in the area. But the, the land. It's right here. So there's the towing company with their house up front. And there is a right-of-way access easement over that property to get to the buildings on that property, to the lines property. But it is part of the subject property. So there are no, you know, easements, right-of-ways, anything like that affecting this project. And architectural plans, including our plan set was. Architectural floor plan as well as building views on the various sides of the, the project, so. Which have been amended as a result of comments by the planning department to include building heights and things like that. So. I believe we had everything checked off as yes, so I'm very confident that we have a complete application and I. Adam did not speak to otherwise in his, in his comments that, that we had received. So I. Respectfully request that the application be accepted as complete.
Okay, any questions? On the completion of the application? No?
I'll make a motion that the application is complete.
Motion by Mark, that's the, to accept the application as complete, is there a second? Second by Brandon, is there any further discussion? All of the favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, it's complete. And now I will open up the public hearing and it's up to me to make my presentation.
Once again, Mark Bowdrey, Civil Works. So the property is actually, as I mentioned, at the intersection of Marcy Hill Road and Manata Highway, Route twelve. And it's actually comprised of fifteen acres, fifteen point three. And out of that, approximately one point eight acres, we kind of designated as the lot for the.
Trying to wrap one stuff in twenty-three months.
Now, what about just the building for it be?
Well, let him give his presentation, but we can come over here and sort the water. It's not fair for him to feel.
Very good.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So. The, at the intersection of Marcy Hill Road and Route twelve. Approximately at one point eight acres that we showed in the plan set is a conceptual subdivision. Kind of that were, it's all under the same ownership. It's not that part, that one point eight acre parcel does not yet formally exist. But it is right basically in this location right here. So then what I can do is go to the. Various. Details. Where we go now to a twenty scale. So what we're looking to do is the, the, by the way, with me this evening, if you have any questions for the owners, is. Steven and Lonnie Giordano from Black Belt LLC, this gentleman in the black jackets behind. And. So I, it's important to mention that the Giordanos actually bought this land from the town. And so, you know, with the interest, of course, of developing it, it's in the business district, the entire property is in business district, so. And what this use is proposed to be a drive-through restaurant, you know, possibly a coffee shop, something like that. It is not, the, the Giordanos do not have any tenants lined up at this time, not that I'm aware of, that I'm really talking to anybody. I think the thinking was is that they needed to go through the town of Swansea to get a site plan approval. To be able to, you know, a-actually market the, the, the property of project two prospective tenants, so. What we, as I mentioned, we had a informational meeting with, you know, back in November, and it was. At that time, asked if the driveway needs to be put onto Marcy Hill Road, which did. Plan that was actually submitted. I'm getting my, I hate myself a little bit, but there's a two thousand three hundred and eighty square foot. Building at this location here. With a, two drive-through windows on the south side. And again, Marcy Hill Road. Route twelve. With the people being to access the, the drive-through by coming in the access drive. Going through the stacking lane, the drive-through lane. And then exiting out this driveway. We had a bypass lane as well to get around it, which I, you know, I think we all know was a good idea. So you're not going to get stuck in the, in, in, in a drive-through lane. With also a lane that would go in and access the, the parking lot. So I know the question came up, I might be a little bouncing around here, but. A question came up in the comments, how many seats were actually proposed? We had originally looked at the design of, you know, twenty-six seats for the, for the restaurant and. The, after that, the, the architect was actually a little, when I, when I got back to him after Adam's comments, was a little uncomfortable. Committing to the number, a number of seats right now because. He hadn't really laid out a kitchen or anything like that because there's no, no tenant, so. What we, what he did, what, what he, what he came up with was that it could be potentially a occupant load of thirty people. So which could, could be patrons, employees, et cetera. So. Just conservatively, if you, if you say that those thirty people each had a seat, let's, let's say you're going to have a maximum of thirty seats. Which may include, the architectural plan shows four outside as well. So that would all be included. So from a parking standpoint, if you take, you know, one parking space for, for every three seats. Divide that thirty by three, you have ten, times one, you have ten parking spaces. And the plan actually had, I believe it was sixteen, that, that has changed a little bit, which I can go through in a minute. But, so we exceed the requirements of the, of the actual zoning, so. It's important to point out that we are seeking no waivers from site plan review regulations or anything else. Now, a couple of things that we are seeking from the CBA, as probably everybody in this room knows, is. Two things, a special exception for the drive-through. Now, this, this is an allowed use in the business district and it's. If you, as you know, the, the intent of the business district is to provide uses in town that will support the traveling public. And this certainly, this would, would certainly do that, so. But, and, and it, and it makes sense, the, the town does want any drive-throughs to have a special exception. And I, I think that makes a lot of sense because you want to be able to control those so cars aren't backing out onto the road, et cetera, so. I get that. And so we are seeking from this, the zoning board, a special exception and for the drive-through, that will be heard. On the twenty-fourth, Monday night, the twenty-fourth. And will, I think the requirement is that you have ten, nine or ten parking spaces, or that are nine by twenty. Basically, enabled to be stacked. basically uh enabled to be stacked in your drive-through lane, which we demonstrated in that view on the, on the lower right-hand corner of the site plan. Um. Another thing, we, I, I did mention uh, the, that we're on uh onsite septic. And the, the town of Swansea has a, in their, in their wetlands ordinance, has a um requirement that a septic system be a hundred and twenty-five feet from wetlands unless it's a um, a repair or something like that, so. We uh located this, the septic at this location, this right here is actually a seventy-five foot line, there is no location on this area of property that could be a hundred and twenty-five feet from the wetlands, so. We are asking a waiver um from, or a variance from the uh CBA to allow some, to, to go down to um something that actually frankly is in excesses, in, in excess of New Hampshire DES requirements, so. Where we, we're about eighty-ish feet from wetlands, and um uh DES requires seventy-five feet from a very poorly drained wetland and fifty feet from a poorly drained wetland, so. We're definitely exceeding that, so. Anyway, the um, so we actually met uh with Conservation Commission last week on Monday night to have a informational meeting with them to discuss the project, so. Anyway, I could go into more details about all that if you'd like. So, obviously, um, you know, any approvals that the, that the planning board granted would, we would of course be conditional upon getting those other, that, that other relief from the uh, from CBA, of course, so we understand that. So um, the sense the, oh, stormwater wise, and I didn't really understand one of the uh, one of the comments in the in the report about stormwater drainage, and it mentioned that uh peak flow rates generated by the project could not ex, you know, uh be increased over property lines. We're actually, uh, all of the drainage on, you know, runoff from the site goes into the wetlands and works its way down into the uh, into the major wetland down in here. So we are not only not in, we're, we're reducing because of our stormwater basin uh peak flow rates pretty substantially, actually, in all design storms.
Sorry, Mark, just a quick informational comment on that, um, that was more so put in there just so the board can review it, all the information.
Okay.
Uh, we, we reviewed the plans and saw that they needed the protections.
Okay, great, thank you. So um, yeah, we're reducing peak flow rates down into the wetland system, and um will uh, so uh, yeah. You know, for all design storms, and it's important to note too that we, this might seem like a small development, but it's potentially part of a larger scheme, if you will, so, a scheme, look, that's a term, scheme of development. So, uh, we have designed this project to comply with all of, you know, New Hampshire DES uh alteration and drain requirements. So it's uh, you know, it's, it's, it's a very, you know, comprehensive, well-thought-out design, so. Um, anyway, the, maybe I can talk now about uh, let me see if there's any other stacking lanes, we as I mentioned, the, the stacking lane is twelve feet wide as required. We, the bypass lane on this plane was, was ten feet wide, but it's not a stacking lane, so we didn't believe it had to be twelve feet, we're trying to reduce impervious cover here, keep it minimized. The ADA space is right here, I think the only issue is that it maybe has to be labeled as a van space, so. But it's wide enough with a eight-foot wide, wide stripe dial, so it certainly complies. There was a question, I think, about the, let's see if I can and I know this is a sensitive topic on this property about um having a gas station once proposed to here, but there's a uh propane tank right here, that would be an above-ground, uh, you know, fully compliant propane tank, there are no underground storage tanks proposed. Number seats we talked about, wide area calculations, you know, when we get, get this thing kind of settled down a little bit, I can, I could certainly, we can certainly provide the wide area calculations for the conceptual lot, now. If for some reason it's a little shy on contiguous upland, for example, we could, this, this lot could be made a little bigger, it's conceptual at this point. And we, we gotta, shame on us, I guess, for going to the nearest uh square foot on the, it really didn't have to be that precise at this point, but anyway. Uh perk permits, of, of course, we realize that we uh, we need to get all necessary permits from the uh town of Swansea as well as the state of New Hampshire, you know, septic uh curb cut that we'll talk about in a minute, or driveway permit. Um, driveway location, I'll get to in just a minute. Um, I know there was some comments back from Conservation, and they were included in the, in the comment package, so, about illegal wetland fill. Would, is the planning board, would you like me to address that, or, I'm happy to, we talked about it with
First of all, continue, continue with the site plan too, though, I mean, that's an, that's a separate issue, but continue with the site plan as to you say uh that you've got modifications to this.
Right, okay. Let, let's go back and talk about the, we can talk about the wetland fill, you know, afterwards. I definitely would touch on it, it's the uh I, I agree it's in a boring time. So. This has gone back and forth a little bit since we submitted, but what we um what we uh, a- after talking with Joe DeRusa and uh District Four here in town, of DOT, we, and I've got eleven by seventeen size that happened to be here, but what we did was, we uh we kept the uh inbound lanes off of Marcy Hill Road as desired by the planning, you know, the town back in November. But what we've done is uh, we, we eliminated this driveway right here, which was the exit drive shown on the submitted site plan. And the issue that uh Mr. DeRusa had with that was that it was uh, he felt it was too close to Route 12 in that it was uh, um within a hundred and fifty feet, in that he uh did not uh, you know, and it was coming out onto a public road, a town road, he did not want to uh, could, could not, felt he could not approve that location. And I talked to him about possibly granting a waiver because the, frankly, the DOT actually liked that location, and uh Mr. DeRusa felt otherwise, he, he said that vehicles can tend to back up a little bit on Marcy Hill Road in the morning or whatever, so. He wanted to, uh, he just thought that that would cause some uh, some um, you know, exacerbate some issues or whatever, so. He felt pretty strongly that um, you know, he, he would not be able to support that location, so. What we did was, we went to the concept plan to DOT District Four and had a driveway coming out roughly here that people could exit the drive-through and go out and could enter the, leave the parking lot and go out. The concern that DOT had with that, they said they could not, they didn't, they didn't find that acceptable because it was, uh, they wanted to see a separation of two hundred feet. And they frankly liked the Marcy Hill Road option. So, what we um a- after going through and, and looking at it, looking at different options, and talking to DOT, talking to Joe DeRusa, uh, talking with the uh, you know, with the owner applicants, what we ended up doing was adding an outbound lane uh adjacent to the two inbound lanes, and narrowed them up, so there are only three eleven-foot wide uh lanes that would allow people from the parking lot and whatnot to get out onto Marcy Hill Road, anybody using this facility from Marcy Hill Road neighborhood would not have to go out onto Route 12 to, or whatever, to come to, to, to go up into the neighborhood, so we thought that was a, a, a good solution. Um, Joe DeRusa was fine with this, you know, he indicated that he could definitely support this. I think it's about like a hundred and ninety-five or a hundred and seven feet from Marcy Hill Road, so it definitely meets your driveway standards. And we also added a driveway back out onto uh Route 12 that was just pretty much to serve the drive-through area, in that um, the one thing we had on this plan uh was, and it, it hasn't been submitted, but we did have a, the ability for the parking lot to go out here and out that way too, if they're heading south. And one comment that we got back from DOT today, actually, was that they would prefer that this be one-way. Because they, they would prefer that the parking area exit this way where drive-through exits this, but they did say, Frank over at uh District Four um told me this afternoon that um he could support that um, conceptually support that uh, that driveway location now. So uh, anyway, obviously, that would need DOT approval for a driveway permit with, you know, you know, verification of site distance and everything else, so. Again, that would be a very appropriate um condition of approval of the uh, of the board. But frankly, we, we don't want to go to all that trouble to get that design done, do all that work, and then get that permit and have uh, you know, something have to change going through site plan review. So we would ask that all of the various permits be a condition of any approval that the board might grant. So um, anyway, by putting that driveway egress lane out, uh, we, we eliminated a couple parking spaces, so I think we have uh it's like fifteen or sixteen spaces on the plan now, so we still exceed the requirements of the uh, of the zoning code. Um, interestingly too, uh going to this layout um actually reduced the amount of impervious cover by I think it's about five hundred square feet if I'm not mistaken. Yeah, about, both for three hundred and fifty, four hundred square feet, so. This layout actually, oh, one other important thing, we actually, just, just in response to comments, we made this, this bypass lane twelve feet wide also. So both lanes going through the drive-through area would be twelve feet now. So even with all those changes, we are still reducing impervious cover from what was on the submitted plan, so.
But we said the three lanes coming into the development are actually eleven feet. Each of those is eleven feet, you said before.
They, they, they're eleven feet now, they were twelve feet wide before.
Okay.
So skinny everything up a little bit, and
You skinny those up, but you increase the size of the drive, the pass.
By two feet, but we also had a, we, we also had a driveway going out here, all the way out to Marcy Hill Road. So that driveway, which is fifteen feet wide.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to visualize the circulation pattern.
Okay.
And, and how much room there is to do that.
What, what's the reason for the two inbound lanes versus single inbound lane?
Great, great question. Um, one would, is, is designated as the drive, for a drive-through.
And that's because you're concerned about it backing up?
Well, the, you're required to have the uh, the nine or ten, nine-by-twenty foot spaces in, in a uh, in, in, in the drive-through lane, so they're not backing out onto the street. And so we had the, we had that drive-through lane, I can see, you can see on the graphic here, it starts about there, the, the last half. So, this way somebody could get into the parking lot, and if they just want to walk in and get something inside, they, they're not stuck in the, in the drive-through lane. So um, that way, you know, it's a designated drive-through lane and pass-by lane, also going to the uh, you know, the exterior closure areas with, you know, easy trash pickup. And um, that way people could get out of the parking lot easily without having anything to do with the drive-through lane. So we just thought that was just good design. Any other questions or?
Traffic studies, have you done traffic studies for Marcy Hill or, or Route 12?
We have not done a traffic study other than to uh, traffic volume on uh Route 12, as we said in our application, was thirteen thousand one hundred and fifty-six to the north and um, nine thousand three hundred and thirty-five to the south. And this project would, according to um uh the uh IT trip generation code, would, would, you know, generate six hundred and twenty-five trips in, six hundred and twenty-five out in a day. So, that's about maybe nine percent of the traffic on uh, on Route 12, but um the uh I think from a site distance standpoint, we, you know, we, we, you know, definitely meet the site distance requirements, and um, so that uh, we, we, we did what we were required to do for the submission requirements and on our application. And obviously, DOT will have a look, see at that as well when we go through that process.
You mentioned something about subdivision, you're subdividing that partial lot of the, the main part, is that already established?
No, as I said earlier, it's a conceptual subdivision that was done for planning purposes for this project. That um, it, at, at some point, it, it, it doesn't even have to, you, you can have in this zone more than one building on the property, so it doesn't have to be subdivided, but it was just something that we were thinking, we wanted to show that it could be capable of doing that. But we have not, it is not a subdivision before the town of Swansea or state at this point.
No, no, both. He's not submitting a subdivision, if you're not submitting a subdivision, then planning board looks at it as a whole fifteen acres there, we don't look at it as a little tiny corner that we have there.
Understood.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, so where would um snow be put?
Yeah.
Since we're looking at a lot of snow outside.
Right. Um, there's a lot of snow storage area in here, over in here. Um, you know, it's definitely some area, you know, we've probably got, there's a large snow storage area right here. Um, you know, we're probably, you know, twenty feet or so off the wetlands here, you know, fifteen or so over here, so it's uh you know, the, I think there's a, a good, um, you know, good snow pile areas available, and obviously, if they, you know, we're not gonna be pushing snow in the wetlands, and the uh if those storage areas get exceeded, then, you know, it'll have to be trucked offsite.
And I'm guessing, you know, during winter just to fall in, like the salt and tanning, um, where, where is that going to melt and go to? Is it going into the wetlands, or is that being treated?
I can show you the brading drainage utility plant. So, we have uh four catch basins on the property. These four, you know, basically the four corners, now that driveway's been eliminated, so we will have, um, it'll be a little bit different, but on the submitting plan.
By putting the corner in the fall of the bottom, so.
So those catch ba- those catch basins all would come down into a main manhole here to pick up the roof drainage and then go out into uh, you know, subsurface piping into our stormwater basin, which is a wet pond um designed in accordance with DES, AOT requirements. There would be a uh permanent wet pool for treatment and whatnot and infiltration, and then um there would be an outlet control structure that would then discharge into the wetland system. So, and the the orifices out of the, this concrete box are very small, like one inch by two inch and a half-inch hole drilled in a, in a three-inch uh basically riser pipe, so it's gonna release water out at a very slow rate, so. The uh, and, and, that's a wet pond, the uh, this is pretty much gonna, this is an upland area on the site right now that is frankly gonna turn into a wetland, so. I think it's uh, I think it's a, it's a good design.
So, just going back to where you showed the parking lot in here, Rose, um, the access to Route 12 that you have proposed, you know how many cars of that is from the exit of the drive-through? And the reason I'm asking is if there's cars waiting there to make a ramp, they might be waiting there for quite a while, you're trying to shoot it out at that time. And, and then they're going to back up the drive-through and, and so on and so forth.
It's um. It's it's a hundred feet to the uh, you know, from getting payment.
Probably six cars. And is is that access, is that crossing wetlands there?
Yeah, can I also point one other thing out, sir? If this is getting backed up, then you still have the ability to go out this way.
If you can get around the car.
If you can get around the car.
Is that is that going across wetlands there and what is wetlands uh?
Yeah, we. We had about four hundred and fifty feet of a small isolated wetland at this location that was being filled for the project. And this location. Would add about uh to that driveway would would um add about five hundred and fifty square, you know, maybe square feet, so we'd be. Less than a thousand square feet of total wetland filling, so we'd still be a minimal permit with the Hampshire DES.
Well, here's the thing with that. There is a zoning ordinance that town is going to vote on in March. That does not allow crossing of the wetlands with a driveway or a roadway or anything like that. So your presented drawings have to comply with those, even though they haven't been voted on yet, but the planning board can't approve. A plan that crosses a wetland with that zoning proposal coming. For the town.
Quick, sorry, a quick correction, I've been looking for a lot in the past month, as you can imagine, um we. The planning board can approve a plan, but no building permits may be issued. Um, so hypothetically, if your plan gets approved conditionally tonight. Uh and that amendments get voted on in March and gets passed. No building permits can be issued, you have to come back for a variance for that wetland. If that ver, if that amendment gets voted on and doesn't pass, then we're good.
I thought that the wetland ordinance changes were not going to be on town meeting.
Uh, that specific one is going to be.
That's news to me.
Not all of them.
Okay.
And it would also affect that small patch that you just mentioned. What, four hundred and some odd square feet?
And why is that?
Because it's.
Are you saying that the town is not going to allow any wetland filling?
That's what it looks, if that goes through, that's what it looks like.
Wow. That's news to me.
So just the other, this is the point I made when presented to the conservation committee, um so just so it's known. Um, drive-throughs generate a lot of garbage, a lot of trash, a lot of people throw stuff out their windows, they clean the car while you're in mind, you know. That stuff has a tendency to blow wherever it is, right? So um, what I mentioned was, there's some kind of valid F D setup. Uh paper. The judge is two, two level that is fencing and then shrubbery in front of it, so anything that's caught in the shrubbery, it's put through the shrubbery. Or I think it's good practice just in general, the wetlands and.
And we mentioned that at the conservation meeting and we agreed that we would be more than happy to do something now. It all, the changes that we're proposing here have to be, go through the entire plan set, so that, you know, when we update that, that plan, we can definitely. You know, make sure to add that fence.
And that is what a fence you're talking about, Mark, like a four foot fence or a three foot fence or?
You know.
We need to nail it down.
You're right, um. I don't know, it seems like major four foot fence is pretty reasonable to protect, protect it um. You know firstly, when I do that, I use like chicken wire, chicken coop stuff, cause it's smaller holes. To catch more stuff and, you know, we have. Situation there with Thomas Transportation where that's just totally wide open to the stream, it was impossible. It's so long, you know. Just having the shrubs like the fence makes it, you know, more attractive and then you have that two layers of protection.
You're talking about something smaller than a chain link.
Uh, I, that's what I, that's what I like.
You can get chicken fence like he's talking about, really, really small.
Something I've done in the past is like a post a rail fence with the like a, you know, a hard red cloth or whatever you want to call it. On the backside of it, so that works out well and it's aesthetically pleasing.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have anything really.
So then it might be only eight high, you know, instead of four feet high.
What's a hardware claw?
Yeah, you know, chain wire, yeah. Something like that, I I I get it that. You want maybe something a little less porous than chain, but.
So.
Well, I didn't realize I was monopolizing the floor.
I'm I'm just feeling like. We have been, I've been studying this plan set that has the original circulation pattern on it. And everything else kind of ripples out from that from circulation, so. I'm uncomfortable. Proceeding with this tonight until I can see how an updated plan set that includes this. Your your revised. Circulation pattern. And I also. Feel like we really need to address the conservation commission's um history. And I wonder if. The board would be open to having the conservation commission, I I I've been told that there is, this is like the tip of the iceberg. That there's quite a substantial file on this particular property.
I'm happy to speak to that.
Yeah, would you address it?
It, why don't you finish it out to us?
Well, I, my hope is that we would get more detailed information from the conservation commission on their concerns regarding. Put it out there.
So could we? Something we have. Obviously, this was a big topic of discussion at conservation meeting last Monday night is Mark in the test and the uh. I would, we were asked to look into that in more detail and um. What I was able to do is go through the the files that the town has on that and it it was quite interesting where. No doubt that the uh, you know, the original applicant back in nineteen eighty-five of the um. Country store that got approved by the town, but then he wanted to come back and add gas pumps and everything and that was denied, which I think seemed to lead to. You know, an appeals and all kinds of stuff. The um. But uh, in the interim of all, i- i- in while all that was going on, apparently filling was was placed. That was in excess of what had been approved. For that development project. And the. Trust me, the plans are pretty uh skimpy as far as showing like where wetland lines are and everything else, so. It was um. But as a, as a. Follow up to that, um ba- basically the Corps of, Army Corps of Engineers got involved, um, you know, DES, everybody got involved, Wetlands Board, everybody got involved. And it was quite a big deal apparently. What? We discovered and I ran this by our wetland scientist and he just kind of in agreement that. The um, the Wetlands Board in nineteen eighty-seven, two years later. Ended up approving seven to nothing. The uh, the the fill that was placed. Um. A- as as it was, with the condition that it basically that that, you know, banks be stabilized. You know, go going down into the wetland and that no additional filling occurred. The Army Corps of Engineers. In June of eighty-five, I believe it was. Um. Also got involved in the site and approved the the filling as it was. And did not require an additional application process. But they said basically. You can have the fill in there that's needed for your project and uh, you know, basically no- nothing, nothing more, so. What I don't believe that the, you know, the conservation commission, and and I didn't know all this uh, Monday night we met them. Um. What they didn't, we were all like a little bit baffled as to why. The, if this was such a big deal with in the newspapers, you know, state involved, Corps involved, um, you know, the town obviously all over it. That. Uh, the 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 owner applicant ended up leaving town. The uh, then attire warehouse or something project ended up, you know, being proposed in the back and the commission wanted them to do something about it. All kinds of stuff was happening, but. In a span of about forty years, the fills stayed in place. And that was a little mind blown to us, but when we look into this, we now understand why, because the state and the Army Corps of Engineers. Permitted the fill that was there to be left there. So. And I don't think the conservation commission realizes that.
We, that wasn't part of the information that we had, um. You know, it was approved with two hundred cubic yards of fill and four thousand cubic yards of fill was added. Um. And that excess is supposed to be removed. And as time went on, things changed, right?
But subsequently, they they uh, they got approval for the fill to remain in place. And it, looking at some of the letters on that, um, it talked about an area that was roughly two hundred feet by two hundred feet. Which frankly is, you know, about that bit, so.
So you can supply us with that information, correct?
It's it's in the town's files.
Oh, that's already in there?
Oh, yeah. There are, there are copies of letters. From DES, the board of conservation.
Proving modes put in there.
Yes.
I could look at that.
Now, there's no. There's no real, there's no plans on a that, you know, that 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 is, you know, but. And unfortunately, DES, our our wetland scientist, you know. Was looking into it and this all happened in nineteen eighty-five. And the the DES plans only go back to nineteen, uh, records go back to eighty-eight. So we couldn't go to DES and pull all those files out and see what they had, but. What I'm going off is copies of letters in the town's files.
Alright.
Public information.
Yep.
Keep it busy.
Could you address the the?
Good thing I love it so much.
The comment says a hydrology assessment was done, showed a brook on the map that the current landowners are not showing.
Well. There's a culvert right here under, and we we talked about this in conservation, there's a culvert here. And it followed the tail. And this. Uh, this area is actually to the west of where the development area is, so that. Kind of flows through this area right here. And I I don't know if it's a uh intimate stream per se or whatever, but there's also a some. Flow which could occur, there's a wetland on. The uh, north side of Marcy Hill Road two. That could get into these culverts and work their way down into this system uh right here, now granted, this is quite wet. You know, no no doubt about it. And then there's another culvert. Uh, culvert's underneath the uh, the driveway that goes to the to the line's towing business. So this does work its way through the wetland system and heading itself, so um. But. You know, we we didn't show. You know, any. Intimate channels or whatever is in the wetland because we're frankly, we're not. Doing anything in there, so. We do show the wetland line way more competently than other plans in the past on this property.
So you're saying that that stream would have been or would be right from that, you're talking about that crosses underneath Marcy, Marcy Hill down through the wetlands area. Look, it's the lowest spot, it's the only place I would think it could go.
Yeah, I think that's the major flow right there.
And which direction is the flow, does it flow?
South.
It does, because the inverts on Route twelve have it flowing the other way.
For one color.
Yeah, underneath that little driveway right there.
But if you look at this thirty inch culvert here, it's going to invert at six eighteen. You look at the culvert under the driveway, it's six fourteen. So there's.
And six eighteen seven.
Right.
I see.
And then similarly, you got six nineteen here, you have six nineteen here, all of this.
So everything is flowing onto this property, even from the other side of the road.
Yes, yep, for sure.
Yep. Questions? Questions from the public?
I have questions specifically to that.
Could you identify yourself, please, just for the?
Stubs.
Excellent.
Uh, so where the culvert comes across, where are the roads, where is your driveway, your proposed driveway?
Uh, right here. No, nowhere near that culvert.
And you said that your roadway in. Is a hundred ninety-five feet?
Yeah, it's. Yep, ish.
Okay, so people that live on the hill, where's that telephone pole where the cable guys always park, is that under ninety-five feet? Like as we're coming down the hill, are we sliding into the, we're going to slide into them?
Exactly.
Right, that.
Frankly, I don't know where the cable guys park.
That's why I asked the people that. That is here from the hill.
Pretty much right across from where the driveway is going to go in.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
Well, at the last point. If if this project's approved, we have a parking lot that the cable guy can park in.
He can work against there.
So, so you're concerned about the the sloping of the hill coming down there and sliding into cars?
I had many concerns, yeah, sorry.
That was one.
I had many concerns, one is I'm coming down the hill. And. The the hill is not flat well. Typically, and you're coming down the hill and all of a sudden. You're on the flat and you're still sliding because it's, even though you're going slow.
Yep, can I just?
And you run into the driveway of these people, can we try to help you to that?
I I think I might be able to address that, there's a. There's a six twenty-four contour right here. And a six twenty-four contour here, this is. This is all flat. It's over five hundred feet. And our driveway is going to be right here, there's three hundred feet from the. From the, when you get on the flat to where the driveway is going to be.
Yeah, exactly.
A football field.
So basically where we're, it it's. Right, it's basically about four high cards back running. Where you go. And you're still sliding, are you still sliding? I just did it the other day, I'll send it out, right in the middle of Route twelve, in that flat. And now we're talking, having cars there beside. It's not getting, it's not even occasion.
Sir, I did.
My thing is is.
Your name, please, for the record.
And uh, my concern is the amount of traffic coming in, in and out of there. I mean, you're going to have the Dunkin' Donuts. And this, you can't get down Park Street because everybody's trying to get in into the drive through, same thing going to happen here. And then plus, how hard it is to get out of there now, it's even going to be harder for us to get in and out of there. Yeah, I mean, I bet a guy killed several years ago, there was a guy killed coming out of there.
Can we hold comments on that, I'd like to, thank you guys, I've Mr. Frank Roy, last name, sir?
Pro, P R O U L N.
Thank you, sir.
I mean, it's, it's hard to get in and out of there as it is now without adding more traffic.
So it's possible then that the outlet that they have couldn't be a right turn only then, I mean, that's a possibility. Yes, sir.
To me, to master, can I just make a question, we mentioned. You have a ten car way, right? Is that to where you pay, is that where you pick up? I said, she said, is there, is it seven cars or is it ten cars, are they going to be allowing that strip? See the strip coming from Marcy Hill.
Yeah.
Down to where you are, how many cars from that road to where you put you on?
I started measuring at the uh, drive through window. Pickup. So, and you you stated that we can fit ten. Cars, right? More than that. From the drive through window, I think it it actually ends right here, the ten, the ten cars, let's see. Nine cars is what was required to have. And it's twenty foot long vehicles, these are sizable vehicles. And but starting at the drive through window, they would back up those nine twenty foot vehicles to there. So they still have another. Fifty plus feet.
And that's from the first window, right, the first window, you're asking which window, correct?
Correct.
That's from the first window or the second window?
Uh.
Furthest window way.
Furthest window.
The second.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's that's how many cars we fit, yeah, we're going to say ten, right?
Sure.
Okay.
I'm sorry, you could probably fit a total of eleven. Cars in there without getting onto Marcy Hill Road.
But that's, you're saying bumper to bumper, right, cars, there's no space between.
But these vehicles where the town requires us to show are twenty feet long.
So I I just want to finish this because it's a couple of questions to follow up with this. And then you can ask anyone, so we got ten cars, right? You also stated that you can do six hundred, over six hundred a day, am I correct? How many hours is this place going to be open?
We don't have a tenant, our our client, my client does not have a tenant.
Okay.
And.
Well, my concern is, I'll go back to this, here's my only concern that I see.
Can I finish?
Yep.
Dunkin' Donuts typically hypothetically, like the one at forty-seven Banana. Is I believe open from five AM to eight PM. And they have uh, like seven-ish employees.
Yep.
So what, that's what we had in our pitch.
Okay, so what I'm trying to get at is, how many cars do you think we have to get through every hour? Because your own concern that I see, so say the kitchen has a uh, heat cut head top, right? Something goes down, the line gets backed up. When it bleeds out on. When it bleeds out onto Marcy Hill, what impact is that gonna have on traffic coming down? Is there gonna be a line of traffic at Marcy Hill if we have a backup going out? If we have a kitchen breakdown, if we have somebody walking away from the window? I mean, there's a lot of incidents that could happen, and I just wanna know what the plan would be if the cars came out in line? And they started heading up Marcy Hill, does it take up one lane on Marcy Hill? How much space on Marcy Street do we have to allow that just in case we are ready for that? Because six hundred cars a day is, you're looking at, think about it and divide that into hours of eight hours. I mean, you're gonna figure if you're ten cars back, ten minutes to get your cup of coffee, and I don't know what kind of food they're gonna serve. Is it, is it, because sandwiches and stuff like that, it could take a little longer, and that's what, the only concern I see.
I mean, that's something that will be addressed with the zoning board for the, for the drive-through, but we designed the drive-through to be compliant with the. Town of Swansea requirements. And we can't design for the doomsday scenario that you're talking about.
No, it's not a doomsday in this case, but all I'm saying is the, the road itself, could we, could we think about Marcy Hill? And could we expand it where there would be an emergency lane, so we're not gonna affect the people that live on Marcy Hill? Coming down and they're not out onto the road?
There is some wide shoulders.
Well, that's how I'm asking, I'm trying to prevent it, I'm not trying to put this project down.
Um, the, uh, I mean frankly, if, in that scenario, people are gonna go somewhere else. Is, is my.
Life's too long, I'm gonna go.
But what's gonna happen? That's gonna be wrong with you. That's, that's the thing.
Again, it's a doomsday scenario, so it could happen, but too. It would happen, maybe, maybe not.
If they can't get in and they stand back up on Marcy Hill, next thing you know, they're gonna be backed up out on Route Twelve.
Basically, the regulations for, for the amount of cars that need to be held in the drive-through is for scenarios like that, so we don't back up on the road. And that's the number that, you know, the town has decided on. There, whether it works in all conditions, probably not, but in most conditions, it probably does.
And, and I think it's important to point out, like I said at the beginning, this is in the business zone. This isn't allowed use in the business zone that. It, it meets the intent of the, of, of that zone, so.
I don't think anybody up in Marcy Hills against it, except for, you know, excellent out around the Marcy Hills or that.
Right.
What would I have a hard time getting out as it is already?
My name is Linda Pruitt. If you, if you're at the end of Marcy Hill and you're going to Detroit, you can just barely see the cars coming. And there, there, there was. Go this way, and you really have to pull up and really look to see if a car is coming. Cause there is a little bit of a curve near that, um, gulf, of course, there was active, uh. See, once you stop pulling out, you thought, oh shoot, where'd that car come from? That's because they're going forty, fifty miles an hour, you just gotta hook it out of there. I mean.
But.
So with a lot more traffic coming.
Well, this project isn't, isn't gonna help those site businesses at all, they're gonna remain the same on Route Twelve regardless of whatever. Yeah, you may have more cars backed up, I think, or Marcy Hills is what you're talking about. But getting out of there is gonna be the same. Just a, just a sec, sir, hold on a second, please. Are you, are you finished?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, your name, please?
Jeffrey Frisco. I've lived there very close for four years. And every day we put our lives on the line trying to get out of there. That place is, is noon in the morning, and especially with the rotors now, and scarred up so many times, it's made so hard to get out of it and what for. And with all these other traffic and all this other cars, I, I think, I don't think it's a good idea. I think there's gonna be a lot of taxes.
Well, we'll see what the D O T, I guess, has to say about that, you know, they have to approve that, that whole scenario, especially with that second entrance onto Route Twelve, which you've run it by them already, but.
Conceptually.
Yeah.
Ellen Frisco, I just have a question, um, this gentleman brought it up before about traffic patterns. At least there should be a study done about Marcy Hill, not Route Twelve, about Marcy Hill. And the times of days and how many, how that traffic is feeding in for people getting out on Route Twelve. I mean, we've got school buses going down here too. I mean, at, at all ti, you know, it, it's crazy there now, it's been a problem for years. I've written to the town for years about the problems on that flat spot in bad weather. In addition, that just makes it worse. So I mean, you know, it's great to have a little coffee shop there, if it was entering and exiting off Route Twelve. But it feels to me like we're sparing Route Twelve the traffic and shoving it into the neighborhood. And that's, you know, I don't see how it's ever gonna work, not for anybody who lives there. So at least there should be a study for the traffic to see how that's all gonna work. Maybe a light needs to be put up or something else needs to be done by the town to make this work for everybody involved.
Okay, thank you.
If you can't put a light up on Route Twelve, well, that would have to be the state.
The state?
Yeah.
Well, how, how can we make that?
Well, the first thing is to hit the select board to see if they will write a letter to the state, have it done, that's the only.
So we have the right to the select?
Yeah, sort of discovering, then add, add, then talk to them, which is possible.
Okay.
Um, one of the things too is that, um, I, I actually hear this a lot, you know, as far as people feeling a, about traffic lights, but. Typically, the state's not gonna just, I don't wanna say arbitrarily, that's a strong word, but. You have to meet what are called traffic warrants to justify a, a traffic light, so.
Well, that's what I said.
Yeah. But. If that situation doesn't necessarily meet one of their, you know, established traffic warrants that are kinda data-based, you know what I mean? Analysis-based, so.
Just bring up one, one concern that is, you might have local people running through your, your lot, your parking lot in order to. Get their other access from Route Twelve, and that could be a problem in itself.
Which is why when, when Frank at D O T got back to me, he, he wanted to make this one-way going north. So that people would not be able to do that. So, you, you're on to something.
Excuse me, get rid of them again. Uh, it is wetlands there, I can tell you for a fact, and I've seen four turtles every year crossing. So if this wetland is gonna leave the side and they cross the road.
I'm not arguing here. We, our plans, our plan delineated very, you know, precisely all the wetland. We had a licensed wetland scientist out there delineating the wetlands for us. And we surveyed located all the wetland flags, so you're well aware of the wetlands. Okay, great. Great. Any other questions?
Yeah, I don't get it, it's, um, I just wanna, you know, great questions, but my neighbors. I just wanna really focus on the point of the traffic. I'm, I'm a pleasantly pumped, uh, I'm sure, not. Um, but it's really concerning, like my neighbors said about the traffic when it dropped down. As well as, you know, the gentleman over there mentioned the traffic setting, like at Marcy Hill, I think all those things need to be taken into consideration. Obviously, it's, you know, it's owned for a business, right? So eventually, this is something, I think, where the life's concern is doing it the right way and safe this thing. Uh, you know, for all involved, you know, I, I didn't even think about school buses, and I worked at a school. And getting on and off of that road, sometimes it's a nightmare, I've been driving since I was sixteen, I was forty-seven, right? Think I know what I'm doing, but, uh, even then, I sometimes close my eyes and just hand it down, see what happens. Or turning onto Marcy Hill, and again, I think. I pray to God that I don't get rear-ended by the next truck or anything, right? As I'm trying to get onto, you know, a hill. I don't think anybody's really fighting the fact of the business model, you know, things are created, we want it done the best way possible for all involved. I, I really am concerned, you know, you mentioned the football field, it takes a lot, snow and ice, I fly out on this, as a side hustle. In a big truck, it takes a lot when you're coming down that hill, that slow crawl, to stop. Yeah, football field doesn't always do it, like she said, sometimes I'm, I'm wondering if I'm gonna end up in the bank on the side of, you know, Route Twelve. That's a real concern. Somebody said doomsday, right? You can't blame them, I understand that. But in the morning and the afternoon, there's a reason why I don't go to docks. It's because that is really backed up onto that road, sometimes backed up in, in, well. That, that, it happens daily around the same times. I don't think that we're really thinking about that, how it's gonna affect all involved, not just the people that live on Marcy Hill or Marcy Hills. And the other roads up there, but all of the patrons that are gonna go to that intersection. Eventually, it will at times blow up into Marcy Hill. Sometimes it could possibly blow out onto Route Twelve. I really don't think we're thinking about that, how it's gonna impact both patrons and people.
Another question, Frank, go again. Uh, what about tractor trailers? I mean, at Dunkin' Donuts, they pull off the side of the road. What are they gonna do, you know, tractor trailers, guys stop the coffee, they are, it's a coffee shop. Or any big truck, as far as I know. What's gonna happen with them guys? I mean, we've already supplied, put it so that there was a bunch of tractor trailer drivers up on the hill. And they're no longer allowed to pack their trailers down there because they're digging up the road. And stuff, and I mean, after, I've been up there fifty-one years, and we finally got the first part of the road bent. I mean.
It is, it is a long range, it's fixed side, actually, it is. It is scheduled on the C I P. Okay, 'cause I'm a member of the C I P, we do have a plan to fix Marcy Hill Road.
But. Who told that two years ago?
Well, I don't have it with me tonight, I could show you the date.
I mean, it's.
The money set aside to start it and everything.
But it is concerned about, you know, the trailers and, and the heavier trucks that are gonna come in and out there.
I, I do hear what you're saying, but I've done a few of these in my career, and you, you typically are not designing for. Tractor trailer truck parking on the site plan.
Neither was Dunkin' Donuts, but they still do it, out both sides of Route Twelve there.
We did, we did have a, um, a, uh, coordinates for slip lanes like that for the drive-throughs at that time. That's why, that's one reason why we decided to do that.
Yeah.
And I, I say that I lived up on Marcy Hill for twenty-five years, so I understand the concerns of the traffic, and it's my concern too. About the traffic backing up on Marcy Hill and then potentially right onto Route Twelve, which, the speed limit there is forty, but everybody is going fifty, sixty while they go on. So.
That's only.
It, it is a big concern of mine. Yeah, the traffic is a big concern for me, you know.
But I'm, I'm concerned with, you know, the truck drivers, oh, here's a coffee shop right here, they don't know anything about Dunkin' Donuts. They pull offside the road, there's no place there.
No.
From the post. But are they going up, or they could pull in to Marcy Hill and pack there and walk over? And then go up all the way up through and around?
Well, we're thinking that is, since what we probably asked the, uh, public works to do is to post signs there. So if they did pack there, you pick up a phone and say, hey, they're parked there. And they could go down and ticket them. Slate strip.
They'll be out of there before they get taken.
Sure, maybe.
Excuse me, where is going to be located the loading or unloading dock? For supply? And how, what kind of arc do you have in place? If it is even a small tractor trailer that's coming in there, how is it going to be able to get in and out?
The, again, we don't, there's no tenant lined up. Uh, we can't, you know, anticipate that there's gonna be eighteen-wheelers coming in here for, for loading deliveries. But, um, they'd be able to, uh, you know, come in here and off hours and occupy one of the, uh, you know, possibly come in here. And, uh, and, and park in the parking area like you often say. But we, we do have, um, the, uh, the trash, uh, you know, uh, enclosed dumpsters here that the truck could pick up and then, you know, go out, so. Well, we could, you know, we could check that with some, uh. Believe me, our, our designer who came up with this layout initially was, is very, um, diligent as far as that goes, so, but I will check with him about. The, uh, the turning analysis that he did.
I, I would wonder about that, turning radius for fire equipment as well, um, especially in the lower quadrant.
I'm kind of in agreement with Vic, Vic, for it. I'd like to have everything updated before we proceed any further on this. I'd like to continue this. You know, continue the public meeting until our next meeting, because this is too ambiguous.
In, in, frankly, we anticipated that. You know, we knew that this is a bomb.
So what we have is, we're looking maybe for a possible traffic study, and we're looking to nail down that Route Twelve exit there. We're looking to have a trash fence somewhere placed on the site, um. Of course, update the drawings for us, and the, uh, D O T, I guess, permit would nail down where that exit is gonna be on Route Twelve. What are, what else have we missed?
I'd like to see the snow tubs located on there.
Okay, located where the snow is going to be pushed.
Yeah, 'cause I'm concerned that, that someone else actually. So, or they'll, so, yourself, the, uh, chemicals that might be used, uh, to help melt the driveways, et cetera, leading into the wetland.
Well, they're all on Route Twelve, so you're not gonna stop at too much there.
No, no, I'll, I'll agree, but where we can prevent it, it would be nice.
Yeah, also possible slip lane maybe think about, um, Marcy Hill there, talking about cars backing up, you know, just trying to go by them. If you can put one in there, maybe you can, maybe you can't, that's something you might wanna look into, think on the drawings.
With that, sorry. Just, uh, would that slip lane be on both, in both directions, because if someone's coming for twelve? And they wanted to turn in, um, they would be turning in, crossing Marcy Hill, so it's wide on both sides at the bottom. So would their slip lane really be over there, or would they actually wait over there?
Well, yeah, it, it'd probably have to be on the wrong property, I don't think they are on the other side of the road there. So if they're gonna put one in, they could put it on their property, they shouldn't be required to put on some nails.
And I just have a question about the study that you weren't done for the traffic. Do you know, like, do you know if that was done, like during school time, or was it done in the summer?
The, it, it's instituted transportation engineers, I T E trip generation manual, they've got. Hundreds of uses that are, you know, drive-through restaurant basically, and. They have, uh, all kinds of different categories for trip generation, you know, peak hour, morning, peak hour, evening. Total daily, uh, you know, weekend, uh, you know, based on the. Peak hour of the generator versus peak hour of the roadway, there's all different categories that, that you look at, so.
And my, my concern was, if you looked and did the study, and it was done in the summer, the summer traffic pattern is. Especially in the morning.
Typically, what they, what I think they do is they collect traffic studies, and they collect all that data and compile it and create a database.
So we're talking about two different things here, we're talking, talking about trip generation, um, from a business, typical type of a business. And then we're also talking about traffic study, two different things.
The traffic stu, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, the traffic study would be done with that type of business in mind. When they're doing the traffic study, or sometimes several that type of businesses in mind. So if the planning board hasn't do a traffic study, it probably won't be done in the summertime, it'll probably be done, you know, soon. But at least it would be a traffic study with that type of business.
Right, and I just meant, what did you, the data they, they said?
Yeah, that's different, that's, that's standard data, standard stuff.
It, it covers all different scenarios.
Yes, sir.
Jimmy Tom Huster, I just wanna say, I wanna stress one more time, doomsdaying seven cars. I think you really gotta stress on that slip lane on Marcy Hill. Cause seven cars, when you're telling me you're doing six hundred a day, seven cars is not a lot in that mind. And I'm, I think that's what's gonna get this, is you're gonna see a line coming out. Cars are gonna try to pull in, they're coming out, I think the slip lane is gonna be the most important thing to have, that they do that kind of business, which we all want them to do that kind of business. It's a coffee place, a lot of traffic, this could be a very popular place. It could be, so be prepared, and that's all I meant, you guys are saying doomsday on seven cars? If you're gonna consider seven cars doomsday, something's wrong, because.
Hey, where, where are you getting seven cars?
From the first window to the edge of the road. Where the, where the guy stops to pay to the edge of the road, someone's gonna stop their car, seven cars be.
So you're, you're deducting these cars to get your seven?
Well, I am, because that's where you stop, your initial stop of a car. Getting changed, going to the window, you're at a ten-minute wait, time on six hundred customers a day cars. Into the eight hours that they could be open, all I'm saying, I think this is a great. All I'm saying, I think this is a great feature, but I think that's where your problem's gonna be. Coming down Marcy Hill, you're gonna have traffic up that street. And you might have to put it in your plans to open that road up right there, so you're ready for doomsday. You're hoping you're gonna hit doomsday, these owners. They want that. I mean, I don't even know, that, that's seven customers, that ain't a lot. Not when you, not when you just said to me that Dunkin' Donuts has a line, everywhere else has a line, why ain't they gonna have a line? Why ain't they gonna have a big long line like Dunkin' Donuts and, and all this?
I'm not sure I was speaking to the, the line at the Dunkin' Donuts here in Swansea. That was not me.
Well, I just think the lines are here at McDonald's, Wendy's, they got ten, twelve, twenty cars in line.
I'm gonna say it again, we fully comply with the town Swansea design requirements for a drive-through.
Yeah, I just, I, all I'm saying is, I think it's a great idea, but I think the slip lane on Marcy Hill is gonna be one of your important things. And I, I think that's what's gonna hurt us. We're gonna cause problems on Marcy Hill. Because we don't have enough of customers that they can line up and they can surface. When, when you, when you're talking about a slip lane, you're talking about something along here, you know, coming down the hill. So, your line, where would the line go if they got two, what if they got twelve customers in line? Where do the two cars second up Marcy Hill? Where do the other two cars, after twelve, after ten cars, where do the other two cars go? If I'm going to get a cup of coffee and I'm eleventh in line, where do I park, where do I, where's my car gonna be?
Your car is already coming up.
I'm gonna be snipping on on Marcy Hill, right?
Or maybe there, over on the shoulder.
Alright, all I'm saying is, maybe we can look at that and design for that, so they can do a lot of business.
But we can, we can talk to D P W about it.
Okay, so, it's like traffic's gonna be an issue?
I just, if my math is correct, just on the topic of trap, tell me if this is right, okay? So, if it is open, say fifteen hours, like Dunkin' Donuts is five A M. to seven P M., or eight P M. So, if that's fifteen hours a day and we're talking about six hundred and twenty-five trips per day, that would be forty-two trips per hour, which is basically one trip per, sort of one trip per minute, a little bit less than one trip, or one trip per.
Yeah.
You gotta get it behind seven minutes.
So, you think you're taking an aver-, you're taking an average and you're gonna have more.
This concentration.
Right.
I make my own coffee too.
Victoria, the problem is you're doing an average and you can't do that with the kind of business. You'll have more like the morning.
True, plus the morning, yeah, so like double that at those times of day, right? But still, it fits your kind of sense.
It's, that's the biggest issue for this whole project, is the traffic.
We got anything different other than traffic?
You got something? Yes, go ahead.
It's going to, it's slowing off with doing such, doing that again. So, the slip lane, it's a great idea.
There you go.
It's not necessarily the traffic coming down. Because again, it, it's the cars coming off of twelve, coming on Marcy Hill. They're gonna be coming in here and they're gonna be waiting. Here's, here's where eleven is. And they're waiting and they're backing up watching twelve's return.
That is not true. That's not where eleven is.
Uh, okay, or twenty. It could be twenty.
Could be twenty.
And I'm not, I hope that you, I hope that, you know, it is lucrative for you and it works. But the traffic at the bottom, I think ultimately is going to back up on the ball.
Can I ask one question? Any of this is addressed with town or property in twenty years? It was such an issue?
Most, most of us weren't even on the board at that time.
Well, that, it probably wasn't addressed because the drive-through wasn't proposed.
Sorry, but we have a professional engineer and a professional soil scientist who are trying to work out the issues. So, we wanna work with every, we want a good tenant who's gonna bring business and bring some income to the town. And hopefully it works for everybody. And if you have a Dunkin's that's already doing six hundred trips and say there's another Dunkin's or another coffee stall, so, you're gonna reduce the checks. So, it's only gonna make it easier for everybody in the long run. And I think, it's in our experience in the last twenty-five years of doing construction, that we can't go on town property and do improvements. So, to ask us to do a slip lane.
W- without town's approval.
Exactly, so just saying, oh, let's do a slip lane.
We're, we're trying to avoid the problems before they happen, is what we're trying to do.
I completely agree.
Right, so, but you're, but we're.
When we proposed the, the development, we listened to conservation, we listened to, we had some preliminary meetings, we took everybody's advice. So, they said, get rid of the driveway on Route twelve, which doesn't make sense from a construction standpoint, from a close standpoint. So, now we have to talk to the DOT and from town people, they said, put that back and that alleviates traffic. Well, that's not what everybody wanted to be for, so that's why we're trying to come with a consensus that works for the town, works for the neighbors.
Right.
And works for a tenant. Without a tenant, you don't have income, you don't have taxes. You're not gonna have any payments in the town to help with the fine department, with water, with schools. Without that, you're gonna have a piece of land still sitting there forty-five years.
But where are the people who live on Marcy Hill? That's why you're hearing this.
That's what we're doing, we're, that's what we do with the planning board meetings. We address all these problems and we finalize the drawings and find.
Even beforehand and spoke to him and spoke to everybody, so how do you work on any issues?
You'll be in again too, that's what we're doing, working out these issues. They, and they don't come up until we have a meeting. Then they come up, that's what the meetings are for and that's what we're doing.
Well, we've been doing this for a few months now and all of a sudden there was comments this morning. So, that's why the plan's not complete. I don't want anyone to think that we're not trying to do a complete plan.
Nope.
Is that comments came out this morning, so I'm not, you know, trying to put everything together.
The comments have been fairly positive for your business over there, so we're just working through it.
Can I say one thing? In fairness to Adam, he did, I did see his comments a week or so ago and we started addressing some of those. But the, the big, the, the big thing was the location of the driveway.
So, most of these comments are coming from, uh, New Hampshire D F T and Joe. Those comments take a lot longer to work through than planning comments. Uh, planning staff comments are typically quick to resolve.
No, no, I didn't mean.
Oh, no, I know.
I, Adam's been fantastic to deal with, very informative and very, you know, in setting us on the path of the straight and narrow to say, okay, this is one of these guidelines, which is sometimes different from the state of New Hampshire. So, you have to go by the more stringent standards, so that's what we're trying to do.
Very much appreciate that. Uh, just mainly just for the sake of public, uh, education here. Uh, comments from planning staff typically pretty quick to address. We can talk about it in New Hampshire State U of U, that's gonna take some work and some time. Uh, so, so nothing is gonna be addressed quickly on that end, but be able to work through it. So, what we're doing here tonight is we're addressing the concerns. So, probably what's gonna happen is we're gonna continue the public hearing until our next meeting. And in the meantime, the applicant will, will be working on the issues that were brought up at this meeting. And at that meeting, they will be brought up to see what the, uh, if the problems still remain or what don't remain. And we'll work on it. If we have to continue it again, we will continue it again.
Mister Chairman, um, I'm, I'm hearing that maybe the board would wanna do a traffic study. I, I think we'd not wanna get to your next meeting and then have the board say, we need a traffic study.
We're, you'll, you'll hear tonight what we're gonna do. We're gonna close the public hearing, so you'll still be able to comment.
Okay.
So, the board's gonna work through what we want. If you have, uh, want to address that, you may address it. Okay, okay. So, yes.
Uh, Mister Chair, I think we should push the meeting out beyond the Z B A meeting as well as beyond the town vote. Uh, because those are two factors that really can impact what this project goes forward.
I, I, they are impact factors that will impact it, but generally, when we continue a public hearing, it's to the next meeting. If at that meeting we decide to push it to the next meeting after that, we will do that, but it will be to the next meeting. It won't be like three meetings beyond or whatever it's gonna be, which is after the Z B A, so, yeah, so.
So, the Z B A meeting is, uh, the twenty-fourth, it's like.
Yeah. Fourth, I mean, the town vote is more, uh, March fourth.
So, what does it look like?
Eleventh.
Eleven, yeah. It look like a traffic study is warranted?
Yes, progress, well, well, we're in Marcy Hill.
Yes.
Sure.
Yes, yes. Well, okay, traffic studying will be asking for on Marcy Hill. And yep, also Route twelve there with that intersection, but definitely Marcy Hill, different times of the day. Well, let's see, the Route twelve exit, as we mentioned before, that's gotta be nailed down as to where it's gonna be, you know, with the, the DOT.
Uh, Mister Chair.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Are you suggesting that we seek a drive, formal driveway permit for that driveway?
Aren't you? Isn't that what that shows out there? Cause we don't have that drawing here, you have it there.
What, what I.
Isn't that what that is?
What I had said earlier on is a conditional approval, subject to getting, you know, going through the process of, for, for DOT before any building permits can be issued.
Isn't that part of what's gonna make this plan work better, that driveway? Isn't that why you put it there?
Yes, but we have conceptual approval from DOT.
Yeah.
What I'm, what I'm saying is, we, we'd like to not go through the whole DOT driveway permit process and then find out the board wants something different.
And you may find out, you know, that you can't fill that wetland hole too, that, that as well. But if you plan to put one there, then the planning board is gonna wanna see it there before they make an approval. So, it's up to you if you wanna go through that process or not. If you don't, then just leave it out of there.
With Joe DeRusse's, um, okay of this, with the DOT conceptual approval, this is what we're planning on running.
Okay, then, then I would suggest you proceed with that, you know, if that's part of the, the design.
And, and frankly, unless, uh, you know, maybe the Geodinos will kick me, but we originally had access out onto Route twelve. And in and out. And we were directed by, in, in an informational meeting with the town back in November to come off Nancy Hill Road.
Yeah, that was up, that was up with our board.
Yes, it was, which we did.
Yeah.
And now we're hearing.
No, 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 let's. Well, you're hearing no for the one that's too close to Route twelve. You aren't hearing no for the other one that's not too close.
Uh, I, I, I'm, I'm hearing that the residents don't like this at all.
But you're not, they don't like it, yeah, because of the, the pileup possible.
Okay.
But anyways, we're aware of that. If you wanna enter it out onto Route twelve, then work through that. And the trash fence, that should be on, could be on the drawings, it should be. Uh, let's see, and, uh, did we say this? Um, they, yes, where the snow is gonna go on the, the, uh, site plan and also a possible slip lane on your side. You know, again, that's up to you. You're the applicant, that's your property over there. It might be wise to think about a slip lane on that side. But if you're gonna do that, put it on the drawing.
And, and in the updated landscaping plan as well.
Updated landscaping plan, oh, because of the changing.
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever changes site, of course, it works through all the drawings anyways, as you know. Yep, so, that would be encouraged. What else did we leave out?
We have to update the lighting plan too.
Yeah. You know, any change is always followed through like that. But what else did we leave out? So, I have, uh, uh, traffic study, snow dump, slip lane, I missed the one thing. Uh, the trash fence? Have that in there? And exit on the Route twelve? Pardon? Is he updated? Oh, they're on it, yeah. That'll follow, yeah. They all get updated. Appreciate it.
Can I ask, Mister Chair, can I ask for clarification when you say would, work through the Route twelve driveway?
Well, the, the, my concern is if, if.
I'm just trying to understand what level of work through you're looking for.
Well, if that's gonna be an integral part of that, to make that site work well, work better, we'll say, then that's probably has to be there. And if the state won't let it be there, then the planning board can't take into consideration that it's going to be there.
Be.
That exit there, yes, that one.
We have conceptual approval from DOT, subject to getting all other permits in place.
Okay, then, then show it on your drawing, you have where it's gonna go, if it's right there.
So, work, work it into the plan set.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
There's a, a wetland permit we need for there as well.
Well, they, absolutely.
Yeah, but it depends on how the town vote goes, whether they need a wetland permit or not, because the town vote, vote goes one way, they can't get it.
I mean, again, the, the, the wetland scientists are ready to submit the application to DOT, I'm, I'm sorry, D E S. But I was, I was thinking, let's hold off and see what kinda, you know, shakes out with the town boards before we do that. And, um, so, yes, we fully understand we need wetlands approval. But this bylaw change that we're talking about is completely catching me by surprise tonight, frankly. So, and, and the fact that we need to comply with a bylaw that hasn't even been voted in by the town yet.
Well, that is the way it works, generally, you know, you'd have to. If you've submitted your plan after those, uh, public hearings or changes in the zoning has gone through, then any plan submitted to the planning board, and this is under state RSA, it's just not our little town rule, it has to be complying with the proposed new amendment to the zoning ordinance, which would be not crossing wetlands. Now, if, if that happens or if it doesn't happen as, as far as being voted in, uh, that's one thing that, uh, that we don't know.
Maybe, Adam, if you could send me that, uh, bylaw change.
Yeah, and I think this is just a good information item, uh, so RSA six seventy-six twelve, um, I think it's that one, uh, yes, RSA six seventy-six twelve, uh, has a provision that states that no building permits can be issued a hundred and twenty days before town votes on zoning amendment changes. Um, this does not prevent planning board from issuing approval. But it would require them to come back to the Z B A office back.
No.
I do believe that the site plans presented to the board have to have that change on them. I, they, I know the seven six twelves pertains to building permits, but down a few paragraphs down there, there, there is site plan in there as well. And I think that you have to submit your site plans with that. The site plan can be, it cannot be improved until after, I think, town meeting, I think that's what that says. Yeah, but it, but it has to have the new, uh, see, the new rules in it, proposed rules in it. So, in any case, we're gonna continue the public hearing. We just wanna make sure that the rest of those.
There's several reasons, maybe.
It might be, sometimes it go that far, but wanna make sure that, that we're clear on everything we want the applicants to put in there. So, like he had mentioned before, if he's not coming back again and again and again and again, we wanna make sure we thought of it all. Possibly with this meeting. So, anybody think of anything else?
Uh, just, just finding what you're saying.
Yeah.
Uh, under eight, under number one, six seventy-six.
Well. Um, now, let's not do that.
No, we didn't discuss, I, I believe they're asking for a waiver to locate the, um, septic system.
Variants.
Variants, great, okay.
So, those are gonna be in the board.
Thank you.
So, I think we're clear on what we want. Okay, that's what we want, that list there. And we're going to continue this meeting until our next meeting, which is, do you know the date of our next meeting?
Forty-seventh.
I think you're right. Okay, then we need a motion to continue the public hearing until the planning board's next meeting, which is the twenty-seventh, without further notes.
I'll second.
Motion made by Michael New York, seconded by Brandon. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor can indicate us. Aye, 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 close vote. Okay, we will see you back here on the twenty-first.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn? We have any other business?
Anthony, my wall ready and, and you told me to make the motion and I said, I'm sorry. I just wanna see people granted.
Your motion? You have to figure out for a second.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it very much. If you wanna figure out for related.
Yeah, no. Right in.
Next week, I'll do. You got it. Good to see you, Brandon. Yeah, you too. Yeah, we have. Yeah, we need a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn, pocket.